Just a couple of announcements before, you know, we get started. First of all, and I want everyone to keep our medical personnel and first responders in their thoughts and prayers, reading stories about, you know, illness that's befalling, you know, those type of workers all over the country. On a very sad, sad note, I wanted to make recognition of the passing of former Mayor Dave Riggsby, who died yesterday. He was a great, great leader for our community. He was mayor for eight years and served another 12 years on the city commission. So on behalf of myself, the entire city commission, our staff and our citizens, I want to extend the community as a whole's condolences to Kate and Dave's children, as well as a special recognition in that regard of our colleague Kevin Reed and his wife Jennifer, who's one of Dave's children. So it's a sad day to lose Dave. He meant so much to our community. He was not only a leader here, he was a past president of the Florida League of Cities, a recipient of the E. Harris Drew Lifetime Achievement Award, which is only awarded to one elected official a year, and there's close to 1,000 in the state. So in addition to his service to the City of Deland, he also served in that state organization and was recognized for that. In his younger days, in the early 80s, he was, or somewhere around that time, he was president of the Deland J.C.'s and named the outstanding young man of that organization at one point during that time. I had the privilege to work with Dave for 13 years, both as, both of as city commissioners and also as, when he was mayor. And we became good friends. He was somewhat of a mentor to me in the sense that working together and watching him serve as mayor, I think helped prepare me for this job. So again, he was a great colleague. He led this community with distinction, and we can all be very, very proud to say that we knew Dave Riggsby. And I'd ask everyone to please keep everyone in his, everyone in your thoughts and prayers as to his family and the like. He was, he loved his family, he loved this city, he loved Stetson University. And as I said, he will, he will be very much missed, missed by our community. In his honor, one City of Deland flag will be flown at half mast, and the signs at the City Hall complex that was named after Dave will bear an appropriate black ribbon of some sort. Staff is working on the details of that. So with that, again, please keep everyone related to Dave Riggsby in your thoughts and prayers. Kevin, do you have anything you wish to add about your father-in-law? Any comment or?
No, just thank you for the kind words and keep our family in our prayers. He was so much to so many people, so it's a community grieving, not just the family. So thank you again.
And I meant to say, I have notified the Florida League of Cities yesterday of, you know, Dave's passing. And as the press release that was issued late this afternoon has been sent to them so that people around the state that knew Dave will also know of his passing. And with that, I would ask Commissioner Davis to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Jessica?
Thank you, Lord, for blessing us to see another day and for giving me this opportunity to even be able to say thank you. As the mayor has stated, the Deland community heartstrings have been tugged hard by the loss of a pillar, community leader, visionary, family man and friend, Mr. Dave Riggsby. Lord, we thank you for blessing him with wisdom and guidance that he has left upon us all for years to come. Lord, we ask that you please provide a hedge of protection and healing over his family, friends, colleagues and the community as we all grieve this tremendous loss. God, we are experiencing extremely difficult times in our city and the entire world. This pandemic is something that we have no control over, but we all know that you possess the power in your hands to heal the land. God, we pray that you pull us out of this pandemic in good health, good spirit and a newfound appreciation for life. Some things we have taken for granted, such as being able to visit a loved one in the nursing home, going to a restaurant, taking your children to school, and et cetera. Thank you, God, for reminding us of the luxuries in life that we have taken for granted. God, please continue to intelligently guide the commission as we do our best to collaborate and conduct business for those that we serve. As we enter uncharted territory dealing with trying to transition the City of Deland into our new normal, we just ask that you help us to make wise decisions. To God be the glory forever, amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Paiva?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Mayor Afkar?
Here. One, couple of pre-procedural notes. One, what I would like to ask the commission to do is to go ahead and vote to continue new business item number one. As you'll recall, at our prior meeting, we certainly signaled that that was the intent. Listening or watching that wants to be comforted that we have taken the action that we said we were going to take. I think we would go ahead and do that now. So is there then a motion to continue the Crest Wind matter to the first meeting in June, which I think is June 1? Is there such a motion?
So move, Commissioner Paiva.
Second, Commissioner Cloudman.
We have a motion. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. A little bit about the procedure. We established certain procedural rules when we first went to virtual, but we really were kind of wondering how the technology would work and how to best handle public hearings. And now that we've begun to schedule public hearings, we've put together a process which staff has provided to the community via our website and otherwise. Basically, I would ask everyone to be patient with us. There will be time lags. Most members of the commission are muting their microphones, so they, it takes a moment for them to unmute and then be able to be heard because of the commission being spread out within locations around the community. I'm near the commission chambers, but in a different room, and speaker cards are going to be delivered to me. And I'm also watching the meeting on a larger screen where I can see more people in the Zoom mode. So if time to time, if I'm looking up, I'm looking at this monitor, I'm not gazing off in the stars or whatever. But anyway, we're going to enforce the three-minute time limit strictly. Only 10 people of the public will be allowed in the commission chambers at any one time after they've completed their remarks. If there are others waiting, those speakers would be asked to leave and to allow others to come in. We'll try to balance that between those people for something and those people against as best we can. But again, we ask your patience as we go through this because it's uncharted waters for us, and we want to accommodate the public as much as we possibly can in this environment, but yet continue to have an orderly and well-run meeting as best we can. For benefit of the members of the commission, I think all of us probably got the same email, but our city clerk received no emails on any agenda item@delandclerk.org as was part of the established procedure. So we know that part for sure. So with that, unless any member of the commission wants to comment on any particular item for the public's benefit of the procedure, we'll go to the meeting again, as happened in the motion earlier. Members of the commission, for the clerk's benefit and for the public's benefit, you know, will state who the maker of the motion, second person seconding the motion. So everybody will, you know, clearly understand who that, who the maker and seconder were. Any comment by any member of the commission? Seeing none, we'll now go to the consent agenda. We have items 1 through 3. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Is there then a motion?
Move approval items 1 through 3, Commissioner Paiva.
Second, Davis.
All right, we have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we are now at petitions and requests from the public present. I have one speaker card, Scott Price. He's on mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name.
Scott Price, 146 North Woodland Boulevard. I'm speaking on the un-agenda item that I think is coming up. First, I want to say I commend.
Scott, please continue. Please continue to look into the monitor and the mic. When you turn your head, we lose the volume.
All right. I just want to commend everybody for what they're putting up here to try to achieve, and we appreciate that you've committed to allowing access. There's an issue that's coming on later. I just want to make comment on it about expanding the outdoor cafes. And I may have heard it in different forms. Somebody mentioned that they were going to close some streets in order to accommodate that and put tables and chairs in the street, which I think that would be inviting some outside area issues. I don't know the liabilities to that that may problematic. But as far as expanding in front of the storefronts, if they got their neighbors' consent, I think that is a better pathway. I've already talked with my neighbor about possibly using his courtyard. And that is something that I can control outside my dining room, which we can always control. We've controlled our dining rooms with cleaning and sanitizing. And I think that the restaurants can easily handle that and what's in front of them. Which brings me to the, another quick point is these barricades, I think have, we've outlived these things unless it's some restaurant that is continuing with their curbside service and wish to do it. I think that if there's no need for other areas, start losing them because from the beginning, I've been open through this whole time. And it's, it's looked like that we closed the downtown in completely. It was only last week that I saw some improvements of numbers that things were, you know, moving up. But I get comments from my customers that it's, you know, they've got to park in the parking lot and walk. Some of them are elderly and they have to walk all the way over. They're not, they're not realizing that, you know, they can not be tagged or ticketed. It's not been enforced, but I think we've outlived it. So I mean, it's something that you should take into account for. But like I said, in front of the stores, I don't know where Darren is. Is Darren in there somewhere? But I intend to put my chairs out during, if you expand it. And I'll have to deal with him and put in chairs. I don't plan to have food service in front of my store, though. It just has made us look closed. But that's my comments for you to chew on later, and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you. I think, just a couple of comments, and I'll ask Mr. Poyce to elaborate. But staff, late last week, I believe it was Friday, met with some downtown business owners, put together by Main Street, I guess, and they had discussion about the various options to allow outdoor seating. And I don't think an absolute final plan has been created yet, but I'll let Michael talk to that. But we understand that we've got to balance the needs of people that may want to walk along the boulevard from one place to another, both for the retail as well as, you know, restaurants. Try to accommodate outdoor seating in a variety of locations so that, you know, all the restaurants have reasonable access. That's probably, you know, a little Pollyanna and difficult to achieve, but we're going to do our best. So Michael, do you want to elaborate, please?
Sure, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Scott, what we've been doing over the last week is working with the chamber and Main Street, both to, you know, generate some ideas with the governor's rule on 25%. We knew that that would be difficult for restaurants. And so we wanted to be as flexible as possible to allow outdoor seating, but we also have to be fair to everybody, you know, in terms of retail and other operations. And we also have to make sure it's safe as well. And so they did not land on any conclusions as of the meeting Friday. So Mike Grebos, if you're standing there down there with Scott, can you just tell him where the survey? Because I think we got the survey late today from the chamber and Main Street. They were surveying some businesses, asking for their opinions about it before they, you know, made any sort of recommendations. And I think Mike has received that or, you know, will receive it and can comment on that if you don't mind. He's standing right behind you, I can see.
I heard that was going on. I just not spoke to anybody. But yeah, like I said, if you keep the clearance for your sidewalk, some people can add tables. But to add a closed street is not going to necessarily be that effective, primarily because by time I think you do some plan, you may see the general plan now go to 50%, which I'm hoping because that'll be a more desirable operating number. I hope the salons and the bartenders are all included relatively soon because we need them. They're my customers and I'm their customer. So the more we disperse everybody evenly throughout, the easier it'll be to maintain than just a lump on one area or one activity. So I want it to be successful. I don't want to have a mishap, especially if we're going to start to invite a crowd when we got our own market here that I think we got to get them alive again to come back in. And they just need to feel safe and they just need to feel that things are organized. And I think our customers would appreciate that.
And just one last comment, Scott. We understand and staff's aware that the governor's order in seven days, 15 days, you know, may change, but unfortunately, we don't know what the next phase is going to look like and when the next phase is going to start. So all we can do is try to address the facts as we know them and try to be as accommodating and reasonable as we can as those facts change. So if you'd let Mr. Grebos stand where you are, I can bring you up. Mike?
Yes. All right. So yeah, we did do a survey of the downtown, and what we did was is that we used Main Street to, Main Street, you know, get out to their members. And the result was about 45 returned surveys of the membership, which they said was a pretty good representative example. And for most of the options, which was either, you know, we talked about expansion of the sidewalk cafe, closure of the street, potentially closure of the parking spaces, using parks in downtown as expanded seating areas and then keeping curbside. So those were the kind of the areas we queried. And when we got back on the information, almost all of the folks said that, you know, the expansion of the sidewalk cafes and allowing temporary sidewalk cafes for folks who don't have them, that was a highly positively, you know, voted result. The one that got the least amount of votes, or I guess they could say the most, I guess, negative voting with that was actually closing parking spaces for extra seating in the downtown. One that kind of floated in the middle, more positive, though, was the street closure. But again, you know, we can look at all the options and see what works best, and we'll take, you know, Mr. Price's feedback from here and use that as we move forward. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Any member of the commission have any questions for either Mr. Grebos or Mr. Poyce on what we're doing there? I see two shaking heads and two I can't see. So with that.
No, I have, I'll raise my hand out of the Zoom.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the comment.
I don't have any comments. I'll raise my hand under participants when I do have a question. But I don't have a question right now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I have no other speaker cards, so we will close that portion of the meeting. We'll now go to old business. First item of old business is second reading of ordinance 2020-3, annexing 7.98 acres Firehouse Road. Mr. Alkine.
Bear with me just a moment, please.
Darren?
Yeah, yes, bear with me just a moment, please.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, annexing approximately 7.98 acres of property located at 2,700 South Woodland Boulevard. Amending city boundaries to include the annexed property, affirming compliance with statutory procedure and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading, this ordinance requires a public hearing. I'll now open that public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards. Mr. Holmes, are you there? Does any member of the commission have any questions for Mr. Holmes? Seeing none, go ahead, Mike, with your presentation or anything you might want to add to the second reading.
Wait, am I up? Okay, here we go. Whoops. All right.
That's the wrong one. I mean, what's on my screen is?
Yeah, that's, no. It should be the PowerPoint, slide number one. There you go. This is, I know we've already seen this, but I just want to make sure that's everybody. This is a brand-new process for us. So this is the annexation that's on the south end of Woodland. It is an existing mobile home and RV park, and they're just annexing in at this point in time. And I'm really here just to carry over the proper area and that we add any questions that you may have. That's my presentation.
There are no questions. There's no public comment. I'm verifying there's no public comment in that regard. I'll now close the public hearing. Any comment by any member of the commission? Seeing none, then is there a motion?
Move approval, Commissioner Paiva.
Second, Commissioner Cloudman.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Paiva?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Afkar?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number two, second reading of ordinance 2020-04, change of land use 7.98 acres Firehouse Road. Mr. Holmes?
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan for?
I apologize, Darren. I saw Mike's face and called his name, so Mr. Alkine.
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan for the City of Deland by changing the land use designation of certain property located at 2,700 South Woodland Boulevard from Volusia County's urban medium intensity, commercial and water to City of Deland's medium density residential future land use designation, providing for severability and an effective date.
Second reading of this ordinance requires a public hearing. I'll now open that public hearing. Again, I have no speaker cards on that item. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, sir. This is, again, we've seen this on the first reading. We've had no comments from the joining jurisdiction, which is the county, and the BGMC has approved this land use, so it is suitable for approval by the City Commission. That's my presentation.
Any member of the commission have any questions for Mr. Holmes? Any member of the public come in? Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Commissioner Paiva.
Second, Commissioner Cloudman.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any question or comment or discussion by any member of the commission? Madam Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Paiva?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Afkar?
Yes. Item number three, second reading of ordinance 2020-05, changes zoning 7.98 acres Firehouse Road. Mr. Alkine.
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, changing the zoning from Volusia County's B4C General Commercial Thoroughfare, MH1 Mobile Home Park and MH1C Mobile Home Park Thoroughfare to City of Deland's RM Residential Mobile Home on property located at 2,700 South Woodland Boulevard. Making findings of consistency with the comprehensive land use plan for the City of Deland, directing change in the comprehensive zoning map, conditioning final development orders on a determination of capacity and providing for severability and an effective date.
Second reading of this ordinance requires a public hearing. I'll now open that public hearing. Mr. Holmes?
Again, I'm only here to answer any questions. The map shows the areas being rezoned to RM, which is the city's mobile home designation. That's my presentation.
Any questions to Mr. Holmes? Still no speaker. No members of the public are present. I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Commissioner Paiva.
Second, Commissioner Cloudman.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Any questions by any member of the commission?
I just had a quick question to Mr. Holmes.
All right.
So basically, since it changes the zoning, it would allow, obviously, for a much higher number of mobile homes. Obviously, the mobile homes are already there. But if there was a wholesale, moving out of those mobile homes and to put more, a higher density of mobile homes under that zoning, would they have to come back to us or would it just be granted because we approved this zoning?
It depends on how many mobile homes they would come in. If up to 44 staff can approve, then up to 88, the planning board has to approve, you know, as a site plan. And they have to be above 88 to come to the city commission. I don't think they can get that many in there because they still would have to comply with current regulations if they do that.
Thank you. And the developer expressed that's not what he was doing. I just wanted to kind of understand the process, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Julie, please call the roll.
Commissioner Paiva?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Afkar?
Yes. Motion carries. Motion carries. We'll now move to item number four. Greens Dairy Road. On all three of the related matters, I just want to disclose that I've had no additional contact or email since the last time we had a public hearing on this. I've not gotten any more information. I don't know about the rest of you, but.
That would be the same for me, Commissioner Cloudman. No additional information, Commissioner Piva.
Same, Davis.
Same, Reed.
Okay, and I asked the clerk to incorporate that, particularly the third item, which is the zoning, which is the quasi judicial. So with that, we'll go to second reading of the ordinance, annexing 35.21 acres Spring Garden and Greens Dairy. Mr. Alkine.
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, annexing two parcels of land consisting of approximately 35.21 acres of property located at 1825 North Spring Garden Avenue and 855 Greens Dairy Road, amending city boundaries to include the annexed property, affirming compliance with statutory procedure and providing an effective date.
Second reading of this ordinance requires a public hearing. I'll now open that public hearing. Mr. Holmes.
The, yeah, this is the annexation, it's a part of the Murtha Cox PD, is the annexation to get it started there. The only change between the first reading and here is that we've added half of the right of way along 15A. You can see that on the very western edge of it. And we added the right of way south of it on Greens Dairy Road. The counties asked all the cities to include right of way where they annex property. And so we are doing that with our final reading here. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any member of the commission have any questions for Mr. Holmes? All right, I'll now open the public hearing. I believe the applicant is present, but does the applicant have any comment at this time?
They have no comment at this time.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing, return to the meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Commissioner Piva.
Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Reed.
We have a motion and second. Any member of the commission have any questions or comments regarding the annexation? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Piva?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Apgar?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll now move to item number five, second reading of ordinance 2020-07, change of land use 32.86 acres Spring Garden Avenue and Greens Dairy Road. Mr. Holmes. Oh, Mr. Alkine, excuse me.
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan for the city of Deland by changing the future land use designation from Volusia County's rural and urban low intensity future land use designations to the city of Deland's urban low intensity future land use designation for two parcels of land located at 1825 North Spring Garden Avenue and 855 Greens Dairy Road, and by amending the future land use map to reflect the change and providing for severability and an effective date.
Second reading of this ordinance requires a public hearing. I'll now open that public hearing. Mr. Holmes.
Thank you. Can you put up the slide six? And this is, again, this is the second reading. We sent this off to the, both the county and the Volusia Growth Management Commission. They have approved it. I just wanted to make note that the annexation was a little larger because there's a small parcel is being left out. The very southeast corner of it is not included in the land use change. They are retaining their agricultural zoning that's currently in the county, even though they're annexing. They will retain that until they're ready to develop it. So this is really just the area that covers the PD, the 32-plus acres. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any member of the commission have any questions at this point for Mr. Holmes? I have no speaker cards at this point. I'll now close the public hearing and return to the regular meeting. Are there any, is there a motion?
Move approval, Commissioner Piva.
Second, Davis.
We have a motion and second. Any comment or discussion? Any member of the commission? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Piva?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Apgar?
Yes. Item number six, second reading of ordinance 2020-08, rezoning of the property we've just annexed and changed the land use on to PUD 32.86 acres. Mr. Alkine.
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, changing the zoning from Volusia County's A3 Transitional Agriculture and R3 Urban Single Family Residential to Murtha Cox PD Plan Development on two parcels of land located at 1825 North Spring Garden Avenue and 855 Greens Dairy Road, approving a planned development plan consisting of approximately 32.865 acres of property, making findings of consistency with the comprehensive land use plan for the city of Deland, directing change in the comprehensive zoning map, providing for severability and an effective date.
Second reading of this ordinance requires a public hearing. I'll now open that public hearing. Mr. Holmes.
I can bring up slide eight. This is again, don't want, oh, does not have a slide look like this? Maybe I've numbered it. Should be one behind it. There you go. I know it's, it's hard to see on there, but that's, this is the PD. It's a little askew because it's, the west side is facing north, but you just have to, that Spring Garden on the very north side of the property. This is the, your direction was to approve the PD with several conditions, and they have complied with that. They have added the parking areas along the small lots on the entrance roads. And then they've added the easement to the property that's to the west of it on the lower end, next to the dog park on the southern tip of it. And so with those changes on it, you know, they've complied with everything that the commission had asked. And with that, I'll answer any questions. The applicant's also here to answer any, if you have any.
Any member of the commission have any questions for Mr. Holmes? Does Mr. Shoemaker wish to address the commission at this time?
Do you have any answering questions?
He'll answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. Any member of the commission have any questions for the applicant at this time? All right, I'll close the public hearing. We'll return to the meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Commissioner Piva.
Second, Davis.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Any comment? The only, I just want to make a comment that, you know, Mr. Holmes touched on it. I mean, after our last meeting, you know, the PD complied with every part of the commission's request. So we very much appreciate, you know, that. We violated our policy a little bit, as everybody will recall, but it turned out the way I thought it would. So any other comment? Commissioner Cloudman, your light flashed on like you wanted to say something. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't flash anything.
Okay, all right. I don't know why it did it. But anyway, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Piva?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Apgar?
Yes. All right, we'll now move to item number seven, second reading of ordinance 2020-09, change of land use Amelia and Euclid Avenue 3.81 acres. Mr. Alkine.
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan for the city of Deland by changing the land use designation of certain property located at the southeast corner of East Euclid Avenue and South Amelia Avenue, from low density residential future land use designation to mixed commercial future land use designation, providing for severability and an effective date.
Second reading of this ordinance require, I mean, requires public hearing. We'll now open that public hearing. I have no speaker cards. Mr. Holmes.
Again, this is, you have a slide, this is, it shows you the area of changing for the land used on it. It's going to a mixed use, a mixed commercial designation from the residential. So, and we've got approval from the VGMC on this, so it is eligible for approval by the City Commission. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any member of the commission have any questions for Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, Mike, this is Commissioner Piva. I was just, we narrowed down the list, obviously, of acceptable uses. I was just making sure that they complied with that narrowed list.
They, they did, but I, as was pointed out to me today, that that's the next item. I will, I was going to bring that up, but we inadvertently added in the banks, and that should have been taken out. Otherwise, you know, he agreed with complying with all the changes that the commission said, and I just, apparently, I just didn't see it. So we can just, we can take the banks out.
Any other questions to Mr. Holmes? Is the applicant wish to say anything at this point? Nothing from the applicant at this point.
I'm sorry.
Okay. We'll now close the public hearing, return to the meeting. Is there a motion?
Well, move approval with the deletion of banks, Commissioner Piva.
Second, Cloudman.
We have a motion and second. Any comment or discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Piva?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Apgar?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll now move to item number eight, second reading of ordinance 2020-10, change of zoning Amelia and Euclid to PUD. Mr. Alkine.
An ordinance of the City Commission of Deland, Florida, changing the zoning from R1B Single Family Dwelling to Amelia Point Villas PD Plan Development on property located on the southeast corner of East Euclid Avenue and South Amelia Avenue, approving a planned development plan consisting of approximately 4.1 acres of property, making findings of consistency with the comprehensive land use plan for the city of Deland, directing change in the comprehensive zoning map, providing for severability and an effective date.
Second reading of this ordinance requires a public hearing. I'll now open that public hearing. Mr. Holmes.
Yes, sir. This is the, again, the rezoning that we'd kind of discussed in our last item, but this is the change to the PD. And I do want to, I want to add something to the environment. See that line there? Part of Barber Court coming over to here. What's the, I think we mentioned in the report, does that, if he gets this approval, he's going to come back and ask for that section of the road to be vacated. And so I want to, I need to add that acreage change into the agreement source included, because it is in the middle of it. It's going to change the acreage to 4.43 acres. Is there any questions to that? Just want to make sure it's clear. When we come back with a new project, you won't see that right of way in the center. You'll probably see I'm having an application to abandon that road. It's not open at this point in time.
Any questions to Mr. Holmes on that? Any comment by the applicant?
As long as you have any questions, he's here to answer them.
Well, I guess the only question I have is that, you know, in, at the prior reading, we talked about the deletion of the bank issue and if the applicants, I think that was, as you, when you went back to your notes, Mike, I mean, that was the, kind of the direction of the commission and some, you know, it was overlooked in the revisions, but if the applicant's okay with that.
Yes, the applicant is okay with removal of the banks, because that was what's, you're right. That was what stated the commission. When I was looking back at my notes, apparently, I thought it was underlined and not crossed through, so I apologize for missing that one, but.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is in there, is there then a motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading with the deletion of banks?
Move approval also with staff's addition of the 4.43 acres for the project, Commissioner Piva.
Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Cloudman.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Piva?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Apgar?
Yes. We'll now move to new business. First item has already been continued to the first meeting in June. We'll now go to a resolution approving an outdoor cafe for Santorini. You have staff's recommendation. Are there any questions by any member of the commission? Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval, Commissioner Piva.
Second, Commissioner Reed.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll. No, not a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll now move to item number three, consideration of policy on utility payback plan. Mr. Poyce.
Yes, sir. Thank you. At the last meeting, we were talking a little bit about, you know, what happens with utilities once we resume turnoffs. And so staff came up with a repayment plan that I had sent to you and put in the agenda package as well for tonight. And essentially, it gives residents a number of different options. We wanted to be, you know, fairly consistent. You know, it's three, six, or 12 months, but not, you know, four or five, where we're picking different, you know, terms, which makes it a little bit harder to deal with for staff. I also sent you the utility payment statistics, you know, right now, cumulative numbers, we're looking at 1,144 out of 21,431 accounts that are delinquent for a total of $136,168. One of the things that, you know, I thought about, you know, over the last couple of days, it is, you know, at the end of May, I'm not sure where we're going to be at, but I imagine people are probably going to continue to be, you know, struggling at that point. And one of the thoughts I had was maybe extending it from, you know, May 30th or 31st to June, but let us start calling people now, offering them the payment plan. There may be some that want to actually start now, and plus it'll help staff divide up the labor, because the original plan was to call them, you know, week before the end of May and try to get everybody on a payment plan. But, you know, that's, that's going to be a lot of work in a short amount of time. You know, if the commission were to approve this policy tonight, you know, we could have Brandy have her staff start contacting people and, you know, seeing they want to take advantage of some of these payment plans starting as early as this week. But that was just one thought that I had, because I don't want to set people up for failure, you know, and start, you know, resuming business as usual at the end of May, and we're still, you know, you know, kind of having some difficulty, if that makes sense. That was my thought.
My, my, my comment on that is, is that most people are paid in arrears, and so anybody that's not fully employed in May, you take some. in May, you take some of the restaurant people with, with the low numbers on occupancy right now, and all that sort of thing. I thought Michael's suggestion, you know, made a lot of, lot of sense to extend it to June thirtieth, but let those that want to start on their repayment plans start between now and June thirtieth effectively. Any other thoughts or comments on the policy?
I also agree with it, Commissioner Piva.
Any other comment? Kevin, any comment?
You know, my only concern, and I agree with, with pushing it back an additional month, but is there something where we could potentially have a caveat where if things continue in, in phase one, you know, for an additional month, that pushes it back even further, deferring their deferment payments or tacking it on to another month, or so we can have an agreement in place and just.
We, we lost you.
Yeah, broke up a little bit.
Have kind of a rolling effect.
You, you need to go back to the point where you were saying that, that if we could just a little bit something, and then we lost you. And we've lost you again.
Let me, uh, let me try to reconnect, I'll log off and log back on.
Chris, did you? I don't know what's his equipment, but.
I have a quick while he's trying to reconnect.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, the only thing I was going to add was that I was in agreement with extending it a little longer.
Okay. Any other comment?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Michael or staff, what are the comments coming in from the customers now that we've had a little time with it since our last meeting? Have we heard anything on?
Sure, those were, those are included in the report, basically, in terms of people asking, calling in, asking for extensions or payment plans, you had, let me just do the math here. Forty-two people asked about that, asking about turnoffs, we had twenty-eight. And then asking about whether or not the commission would be considering waiving charges or the bills. We had eleven people ask about that.
Okay, so the majority is, they just want some extra time?
Yeah, they just want extra time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think a little bit to Kevin's point is, is that at this point, we don't know what we don't know, in the sense of when phase two's going to start, how long phase one's going to last, and all that, and what an impact. And I think all we can do is, you know, continue to be open and willing to work with our citizens and customers as best we can, and in two weeks, if it's a different set of rules, you know, we can extend this further. Anybody that may have signed an agreement, we, we might be able to, to, you know, recognize that, that in fairness, that them, new policy change, they ought to be entitled to. I guess is the best way to say it, so. So, if there's no.
Kevin, Commissioner Reed came back on, so I think he still had his comment.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor pretty much summed up my comment, it was basically, you know, if this continues on, is there something we can put in automatically where it might stretch it out another month or so? Just to not go back to everyone to get another agreement.
Right.
Okay, with the, with the addition of authorization to have a pay what you can policy continue to June thirty, is there a motion to adopt the policy as suggested by staff?
Move approval, Commissioner Piva.
Second, Commissioner Cloudman.
We have a motion and second, any further comment or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, that concludes the regular agenda, the City Commission will now go to City Manager's report.
I, I do, I do have a couple items, but did you want to do the committee report outs from Commissioner Cloudman on the?
Well, we typically do those after we've gone through the, I've got a note to do that, we typically do all, and then then go to the commission reports.
Okay, all right, so.
I didn't, in other words, I didn't forget, Michael.
Okay, I just helping you out, sir. One of the things I wanted to know is, you know, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, I guess a full-on test, but we did have, you know, at least one, you know, public speaker tonight, and just kind of gauging your level of comfort, because the planning board does have a number of items to include some variances and stuff. And, and so if the commission is comfortable with it, I'd like to go ahead and release them to go ahead and have their meeting on May twentieth, so that they can hear some of those items, you know, using the same format you're using. You know, we, we still got to make sure everybody on the planning board is comfortable with it, but, you know, wanted to gauge your, your level of comfort with that. You know, and that was my first question, and then.
Any, any comment on that?
Yeah. Good, sorry, Chris. No, you go ahead. That, that was all I had, just that I'm comfortable with it, so go for it.
Okay.
I just had a couple thoughts or ideas. Is there a way for the public to call in at all, or is the only way to participate either a, a prior email or a, to be there in person? Is one, and then the other is, it's not agenda, and we don't have applications in, but I, I believe we still have an open seat on the planning board that we need to sort of appoint someone to.
We do. Yeah, we need to, we need to have, Julie, do we have applications for that, that we need to bring? I think you had, I think you have one.
I have one application for the planning board, I also have some historic preservation board applications that have been put on hold.
Okay. So maybe we can try to work with those folks for your next meeting to have those appointments be made, and see if they're comfortable, you know, using this format to, to do whatever sort of interview you want to do, you know, for, for them, if that's okay. As for the, the planning board, Chris, we can look into that, are you, are you talking about just calling in to listen, or calling in to also participate?
No, I was thinking more, you know, like tonight, we had several times where, or asking if anyone is present from the, the public, and I, I, whether it's the call in through Zoom where they have video even, or, or on the phone, I just didn't know if there was an option for any of that. They happen to be listening at home and say, oh, I, I need to ask something.
Yeah, that, I mean, when we tested it, you know, that proves really difficult on the Zoom conference, you know, trying to, you know, figure out who wants to make a comment, then recognizing them, then unmuting their microphone, and so we opted not to do it that way, but rather have that input be given in person or in writing.
Okay. Okay. Just a thought.
Yeah, I think, I think one thing, you know, and this is something Commissioner Reed and I talked about, you know, is I think if, once you get more, once, once you get items that have a lot more heavy input on them, like the Crestwind Development or Glass House, I think this format's going to prove problematic. You know, I, I just do, I mean, I honestly think that, you know, those hearings, it's going to be difficult to, to do it with this, with this setting. And, and I think that's something we're going to have to, you know, talk about, you know, as, as we approach June, and how y'all want to handle that. It's, it's hard for you to have the back and forth, you know, over, over Zoom.
And just speaking for myself, I mean, as you saw tonight, you know, I was looking at the screen, and I saw Mike Holmes, and so, you know, that, seeing all the motion of everybody and try and run the meeting is, so from my perspective, the, the more levels of contact we add to the process, I, I think the greater the confusion and the likelihood that we overlook somebody. And I think as long as we make it clear, you know, what, what the rules of procedure are, which is substantially similar to what the city, I mean, the county of Volusia's doing, and, and in conversations with other cities, I think the only one that's probably been a little more aggressive in multiple approaches, maybe to Barry, and I mean, Michael can talk to Carmen and see what they've been doing, not to foreclose it, but that's just, you know, my, my take at this point, but it's not. Again, the point is, is if people don't want to come out because of the, you know, the virus, you know, to try and make it accessible for them, but that's, you know, why the email route was, you know, a good idea as well, and a clear notice of, you know, when the comments had to be in by, but anyway. Any, anybody else have anything on that point?
Yeah, Bob, yeah, I, I agree with Michael's assessment that having a very complex discussion on something like Crestwind or Glass House certainly would prove very problematic from that standpoint. So hopefully, things move forward to where we can have a more adaptive process. But, you know, if we have to, we'll make it happen, that's what we do, but unfortunately, it would be quite the challenge to get the best product at the end, if we get a thought, and you have to wait ten minutes to get back around to it. But, but hopefully, in, in the next month, before the, the meetings, we'll fine tune it or move to a more half-live scenario.
Well, and as we've said before too, in two or three weeks, you know, they may extinguish the option of virtual meetings and, and just say, you've got to figure out how to socially distance and hold your meeting, who knows? I mean, I.
I think one option is the meeting that we had, what was it, the first meeting in March? You know, where, you know, you were all distanced on the dais, and, and, you know, Darren and I were, you know, below. I, I think we probably need to make sure that we do a better job identifying how many people can be in the room, because I, I think in the back, we had too many crowded in, in the back, but, you know, I mean, that may be an option we can, you know, look forward to in the future, so.
Any other comment on that? So, I proceed as suggested, so go ahead.
Yes, sir, and then the other thing I had is, if you're okay with it, calling a CRA meeting for your second meeting in May, we're, we are checking with Ella and Bill, I think they are comfortable with Zoom, so that we can, there's a couple of items. One of them was whole banners, and Mike, I forgot what the other one was, but, you know, we wanted to award the bid on that, and then get those projects moving, so.
Fine with me, anybody have a problem with that? Seeing, I'm sorry.
I'm okay with it.
Me as well.
Okay. And that's.
Silence is deemed dissent, so I guess you. I, I won't comment on my thought, anyway, go ahead.
No, sir, that's it, thank you.
What time would it be, the CRA meeting?
We would, we would probably do, we could really probably do it in fifteen minutes, but, you know, with the Zoom, it, it takes us a little bit to get organized, so I would probably, you know, call it for six thirty.
Okay.
But we don't need that long for the actual discussion.
Yeah, and I, I, I think just from handling any public and stuff, it'll be easier if there's a gap between two meetings, so we can do any sanitizing or anything that the first meeting might require before we go to the second meeting.
I, I'm sorry, I did forget one thing, too, on, on the bridge and the Joyce and Cusack Resource Center, both, you know, the construction, of course, has been delayed. You know, we still don't have electric at the Cusack Center, and so that's probably a couple, three weeks out, and I believe the bridge is the end of the month, and so obviously, those projects, you know, you know, are delayed, and so would the ribbon cuttings be, you know, assuming we could even have a ribbon cutting in the near future. It may be that we have to do like a soft open with some small group tours of both, and, you know, have ribbon cuttings like in the fall. I am working with the neighborhood center staff on kind of a revised plan that we can share with all of our stakeholders on the bridge, you know, because out of the gate, you know, it's going to be hard for us to, you know, feed a hundred people inside the dining hall, for instance, you know, and, and so we, we have to come up with a little bit of a different game plan to keep the employees and the volunteers and the clients, you know, that we're going to be serving safe, and so I just want to let you know we are working on that. But unfortunately, the virus has put those two projects behind.
Okay, there are no questions of Mr. Poise, Darren?
Question from Michael, Michael, did you want me to brief the commission at all on process for the outdoor seating accommodations?
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the things that we wanted to see if you were okay with was, you know, kind of a staff-approved, you know, outdoor seating arrangement, sidewalk cafe type arrangement. So if you want, Darren can just give you some of his thoughts that he was, you know, giving to Mike, as Mike's been meeting with Main Street in the chamber. You know, see if you're generally okay, we would bring it back to you for approval of, of, you know, the, the program, so to speak, but we're still proposing it be kind of a staff-level approval for the individual licenses.
Michael, my, my view is, not knowing in two, if what you're suggesting is, is in two weeks, and that people are going to have to wait, I don't think that's, you know.
That's not, that's not what I'm suggesting, what, what I'm suggesting is, is you allow staff to kind of move forward with the program, and, but we would still come back to you and, and just give, ask you for formal approval at the second meeting, even though we, you know, will have tried to move forward with it already. That's why we were trying to just get a sense from you tonight, is there anything about, you know, what we had talked about that you're just completely uncomfortable with and want to take off the table, like, you know, outdoor seating in a parking space, or outdoor seating by closing down, you know, a street, you know, is there anything you want us to take off the table? Otherwise, we wanted to kind of proceed and try to get something implemented for our businesses.
Mayor, can I, this is Darren, can I address a couple issues that
Sure.
may alleviate your concern? As we have done with other items in response to this emergency, we have taken action at a staff level where we just absolutely had to, and come back to the commission afterwards, you know, to ratify the action that we have taken. As this process evolves of providing areas and opportunities for outdoor seating, we would like to do much the same thing, and it would be broken down into two parts. One is in the sort of the core downtown area where we already have, you know, people on, on lots that have no extra space, they don't have their own parking lots. So to have any outdoor space, they have to be on some public property. We would have a temporary license agreement for those folks, would approve it at a staff level, it would be expedited, that the individual licenses would not need to be brought back to the City Commission. Outside of the core downtown area, you have other restaurants that are on private property where they have their own, their own parking. They may well want to move some seating, some, create some outdoor seating, even if it has tents or what have you in their parking areas. And so that would not involve any license from the city, because they're not going on any public property, but they would need some sort of development order approval in order to reduce parking. If they've got a covering, we want to make sure the building departments looked at the, you know, those sorts of issues. All again, at a staff level, so there'd be the two tracks, license agreements for folks to temporary, for downtown, and temporary development orders for, to create very quickly and expeditiously outdoor seating everywhere else on private property. And then with all of that, we would bring back to you a resolution just affirming what we're doing, and much like we have done with a couple of other, a couple of other items. That's all.
All right, any questions to Darren? I, I, I'm the only thing, Darren, I think that, that for non-downtown i- is that. for non-downtown i- is that you know, that, and maybe it's implied in what you said is, is that, you know, we need to make an evaluation of safety concerns. Uh, yes, some people that have relatively small lots and are doing drive through uh, as well to then accommodate tables and parking in parts of their parking lot may, you know, pose some risk to the, the people in dining outside. So I think that's got to be part of the process.
Understood.
Understood. Um, any other comments?
Yeah, Bob, Commissioner Piver. Uh, probably the one that would give me the most concern is blocking roads. Um, certainly expanding the sidewalk cafes I'm comfortable with, even taking some parking spaces like we do with the curb side. But, um, you know, I, I think there'd be some winners and losers in that. And then from the public safety or just getting around, that would probably be the one that would give me the, the most concern uh, right off the, the top of, uh, top of my head. So that would be the one that I would least like to see implemented uh, versus the other ones. I, I trust in, in staff's ability to figure out what works and what doesn't. But closing roads poses a challenge. Um, one, just for transportation, but two, for safety. So that would be the only one that really kind of piques, piques my concern.
Other comments?
I, I, I agree with, with Charles. Uh, the road closures would be a, a, a major concern for me. Um, you know, Mr. Price brought up a, a, an interesting point where um, we kind of want downtown to look somewhat open as well. So, um, you know, blocking off more parking spots would kind of defeat that purpose too. Not that we want an influx of people per se, but, um, but meeting the, the standards, I think uh, would be, would be favorable. But I, I definitely would be against closing down streets.
I, I, I see it a tad bit differently and then I guess it depends on which street and which location. I mean, and I don't want to make it overly complicated, but, you know, during the business day, you know, there, there, I would agree, we, we don't need to be closing down streets. But no different, uh, you know, why, why not to, to help and accommodate? You know, at, at 5:30 PM, you know, we can close down Georgia Avenue on a daily basis or wherever that stuff might make, might make the most sense. Uh, also, you know, the partial use of some of the parking lots because i- if we don't want to, if we're going to try to be successful with this, we got to think about firehouse subs, if they want to put, put some outdoor seating, it's pretty distance away, distance, the Sweet Licks is across. You got them all dispersed and we've got to do our best to try and treat all of those people as fairly as we possibly can, notwithstanding that a customer may have to get it and, and walk a block to, you know, where there's outdoor seating, if that's what they choose to do. So, but, but, you know, my big concern is during the business day, expanding the footprint for those people that just are out walking downtown or whatever, where, where there's no passage. And, and I, I think at least having what I've saw over the weekend, I think you're going to have a lot of people that'll you know, squeeze an extra few feet one way or the other, notwithstanding what it says. And we don't have the people to enforce and say, you know, you're six feet over where you should be. So I'm a little reluctant to expand the footprint to such a way that it does not allow ease of pedestrian traffic. Because somebody may want to go from one parking lot to a different restaurant and they have to walk through, uh, you know, somebody else's lunch, so to speak. So that's my take. Other comments? Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, and I understand what you're saying. Um, and I, and I, I think there needs to be some clarification too. I mean, are these, in, in my opinion, the, the sidewalk cafe is a, a served table seating. Um, and you know, when, when you describe closing down parking lots and, and, and whatnot, that almost to me sounds like almost like a food court setting where you're going to get your food to go and you're going to go sit there rather than be served. Which is fine, uh, if, if that's what we're looking to do as well. Uh, I just think there needs to be some clarification. You have multiple restaurants serving in the same areas that I just seems like somewhat of a nightmare.
Yeah, an- anecdotally, I mean, I, I, I think in my conversation with MG, uh, you know, one restaurant intends their table dining to be, here's a box and, and a, a to-go thing. And if you want to go down to and sit so and such place, which didn't make a lot of sense to me. If I'm going to pick it up and walk to sit somewhere outside, I may, maybe if I want a change of environment, I may just take it to go and go home. But that's me, I'm old. So any other comments?
Well, and I think for, you know, some of the restaurants, as I understood it, um, you know, from Mike is that, uh, you know, there's a concern about how much labor is involved with them, you know, um, you know, picking up tables, taking them outside, maintaining them and stuff. And I think to Kevin, uh, to Kevin's point that, you know, they're going to want it to be a, a service type, you know, seating operation that they, you know, are able to control. You know, they're gonna, you know, want to be able to set these tables out there and, and, you know, they'll, they'll be serving them. Uh, and then, you know, cleaning up and, you know, perhaps even bringing the tables in at the end of the day. I don't know, but.
And this, this question goes to Darren. Is it, is it possible to close down the sidewalks and not have pedestrian access on certain parts of the sidewalk, closing it down for full cafe space? And then utilizing a detour where if one side's closed and the other side of the street is open, vice versa?
How does that impact the retailers on the side of the street where the sidewalks close?
Uh, yeah, I don't think that's a, Kevin, I don't think practically we can do that. Um, got some significant ADA concerns, um, as it is with the, with the sidewalk seating. Um, so no, I mean, the only way to get the people would be to put them. Yeah, I mean, I, you'd have to make them cross the street, go down the other side of the street. Then I guess on the other side of the street, they can't have any sidewalk cafes over there. And so, yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think so. You put me on the spot, but I don't think so.
Not a problem. I was reaching.
But Mr. Mayor, this is good feedback, so thank you. I, I appreciate that and, and we'll be able to, um, you know, finish that conversation with the, with the group and come up with a good program.
Uh, again, we need to be flexible and accommodating, but, you know, as everybody said, we need to be fair to everybody, uh, in, in the process.
Yes, sir.
That's Pollyanna, so I understand. Does that conclude your part there? Or that Darren, is that all you had?
Yes, sir.
Julie?
Nothing, sir.
All right. Uh, well, now the commission's report, the round table did not meet. Chris, River to Sea and River of Lakes.
All right. The River to Sea TPO, um, has continued to meet. Uh, we just went directly to using WebEx or other platforms uh, to have both our, our executive meetings as well as the full board. And so we, we just had a full board meeting last week. Uh, I can go over a couple of quick points from the, the recap. It's interesting, you know, we were talking about earlier, just the, the difference of having everyone in a room and being able to read people as you're talking and, and get better back and forth versus on a platform like this where you're, uh, you have some people that are muting themselves, but others that aren't. And then you're getting a lot of background noise and it's difficult to follow sometimes. Uh, but one of the things that came up and was actually decided to, uh, continue, continue until there's more information was uh, the, uh, they were, they were looking for a letter of support from the TPO um, for designating State Road A1A scenic byway as an all-American road. Uh, but there were some questions as to how that would impact funding in the future, uh, whether that would elevate it above other projects or, uh, possibly have, have any projects on that scenic highway have to, um, go through additional levels of approval. So they're, they're going to look at that and, and bring that back. And I, I know, and I know that's on the east side, but I bring it up because I know um, the River of Lakes Heritage Corridor uh, is a, become a national scenic highway right now. And, and several entities, including the City of Deland, um, sent in a, a letter of support on that. Um, a lot of, a lot of talks still ongoing of the 2045 Long Range Plan. Um, we're still doing updates to that. The public comments have been sought for that. Um, and, and are closed. And now they're open right now is a survey of Tell the TPO 2020 um, survey. And so every year there's a survey, um, to, for citizens or, or any, anyone to give input to the TPO, um, items that, uh, of concern. I, I guess, um, concepts, uh, that they want to see pushed for, whether it's bicycle, pedestrian, um, use of automated vehicles or whatever it happens to be. So that survey is currently open. And for Deland, I actually have a unique link that I can get to Chris if we can put it out um, to where it, it shows that, that Deland has pushed it out and, and surveyed back with, with. So I can send that like, um, uh, other than that, we reviewed projects going on. The, the approval of large scale items right now is kind of scaled back as we're, as we're meeting remotely um, as a lot of the groups. Uh, and then just this morning was, uh, this month's meeting of the River of Lakes Heritage Corridor. Uh, we received an update from the group out of the University of Florida that is doing a economic impact study for us. Um, and so, uh, several of the, a large events that they were scheduled to do surveying at, have been canceled um, in the last month or so. So, uh, they're looking for additional events to take their place. Uh, but when it's all said and done and they digest all the, the, uh, the data they collect from that, we'll have a report showing it, an economic impact that the River of Lakes, um, creates in this area. So I think that'll be a good tool to have.
Any questions of Commissioner Cloudman? All right. We'll, uh, now go to commission comments. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I want to, um, thank Michael and the staff for keeping us informed with everything that's coming from the top and, um, doing our best to try to see how it fits with our city. So thank you for that. Um, also to the gentleman, make sure that you don't forget about Mother's Day this weekend. I know we all have lost track of time. I know I have. I'm not sure what day. Happy Mother's Day to myself and to your loved ones and just continue to be safe and God bless you all.
Okay, Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, just, Jessica, happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Uh, just keep in mind, all, all the teachers are still teaching and, uh, you know, we still appreciate everything that they do. Um, also, we still have that census, uh, sitting out there. So, um, keep reminding people to, uh, conduct their, their census if they haven't already. And, uh, thanks for the Mother's Day reminder to remember my kids aren't coming home with pre-made Mother's Day gifts this year. So leaves it up to me. Thank you for the reminder.
No problem.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Cloudman?
Uh, now just to, uh, I guess piggyback on Kevin there, happy Mother's Day to Commissioner Davis and all of our staff. Um, uh, and as well as Commissioner Davis and, and others that may be listening. Uh, thank you for what you do with our children. Um, and to Commissioner Reed and your family. Um, uh, as a, a big loss and, and was very sorry to hear that yesterday.
Charles?
Yeah, just want to give my condolences to, to Kevin and his family. Um, you know, Da- David was an early supporter of mine when I was a, a new 25-year-old and he spent a lot of time with me, educating me on the city and, and supporting me. So, um, you know, obviously worked with him when I was at Stetson and, uh, you know, had a lot of different relationships with David and, and, uh, very important to our community, to Stetson and to Deland and, and just on a personal status, I really appreciate all he's done for me, uh, to be involved in the city. So, um, you know, great loss for the city. And again, uh, my heartfelt condolences, uh, go out to you and your family, Kevin.
Thank you.
To piggyback on something Commissioner Davis said, uh, you know, tr- truly our, our staff is doing an incredible job through all of this. I mean, e- every, every day seems to pose new, new challenges or new things that somebody has suggested or, you know, just like the governor's order now having to figure out how to accommodate, uh, you know, outdoor seating to help our downtown businesses and, and, uh, but staff is being responsive and getting after these, uh, new requests and things. And, uh, that they really are collectively doing a great job, uh, during these difficult times. So again, uh, they, thank you, Michael, and all the department heads and all of our employees for what they are doing during these difficult times. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Jessica, you as well. The mayor still continue to have weekly conference calls every Thursday and, and talk about the developments and as the managers are talking three times a week. But at least, uh, you know, they're, we're, we're in the loop and, uh, I'm able to pass information along to Michael as to what, uh, one of the other cities, at least from their mayor's perspective is doing that, you know, we might be able to do or think about. And then, uh, last week was Nurses Week, uh, coincidentally. And we participated, uh, by video in a celebration that they were having for that. Uh, ju- just on a personal note in, in out and about maybe more than I should have been a little bit this weekend. But, um, I, I think there are going to be real challenges during phase, phase one. I mean, people, stores were, you know, extremely busy. You know, you read in the paper about, you know, the hotel occupancy being, uh, you know, up. I, I know there's a lot of pent up demand and it was kind of the first weekend, weekend where people felt like, oh, I can, you know, I, I've got a little more freedom. But, but I'm afraid that, 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 that also is going to pose some challenges, uh, uh, over the next period of time. And I continue to read about this, you know, stuff as I'm sure you do about a second wave in the fall. And, you know, I think everything we can do now to, uh, stay safe and honor what the experts are telling us about wearing masks in public and social distancing and cleanliness and disinfecting and washing your hands, uh, i- i- is a good thing. And, and people still need to only, you know, try, try to hold their shopping expeditions to a minimum, so to speak. And, and we'll all be better for it. And, and, uh, you know, like when they talk about some of the numbers and they say, well, a lot of it was in a nursing home. And, and I understand that, but, you know, a nursing home has 20 or 30 employees that, that then leave the nursing home and go out into the community. And even though they use safeguards, you know, and, and are doing a good job in that respect, you know, as they're out, they, they also were, uh, you know, potentially, uh, as they're out, they, they also were, uh, you know, potentially, uh, you know, have the virus, and I don't necessarily mean, you know, o- other than like clothes or, you know, o- o- other things that they, they may touch inadvertently, so I, I just think it's just, I just want to remind everybody, uh, on our staff, and, you know, anybody that's, you know, watching or listening, that, that we need to continue to exercise do caution, because I think, uh, uh, well, I guess George's experience where it was, is that their numbers did go up, uh, after, uh, you know, the they relaxed some of the things, now they may be, that may be off, that may be, you know, two-week-old numbers, but, uh, that they, they were up, with that, uh, Kevin, uh, to you and your wife and kids, uh, my condolences, uh, please express those to Kate, uh, as plans develop, pl- please keep us informed a- as to what the family's plans are, so with that, if there's nothing further, this meeting's adjourned.